It is seven o'clock. Roll call, Danny?
Here.
Diana?
Here.
Jeff, Jeff?
Here.
Here.
Jessica? Kimberly?
Here.
Leah?
Here.
Anna and I am here. Uh, Steve, Dr. Solerino, can you certify that this meeting has been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
Thank you, let's try it in the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Uh, thank you, we have a volunteer to read the mission statement.
Oh yeah. Well, our area school district in partnership with the community that's dedicated to nurturing, educating, and challenging all students, preparing and empowering them to be productive, responsible, and self-fulfilling members of society.
Thank you, Jeff. Uh, on the item two A, do we have any revisions to the agenda? Hearing now on our team a motion to approve the presented agenda. So Jeff has moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve the presented agenda, is there any discussion? Hearing now all those in favor will say aye.
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 All those opposed will say no. The ayes have the motion carries and the presented agenda is approved. We're now on to item three A addressing the board's citizen comments. Before, uh, we begin citizen comments, I'd like to make, uh, two comments. One is that I suspect that there may be some winter athletes or folks who support winter athletes, uh, who would like to speak to us tonight. That is fantastic, uh, I just needed to, to tell you that based on our agenda, we can't take any action tonight on the issue that, uh, is, is near and dear to your hearts and will be on the agenda, uh, next Monday night, the twenty-sixth of October. And since we have, uh, a fair number of people who are wishing to speak tonight, I wanted to remind, uh, participants in citizen comments that the board has instituted a policy and that policy number is one eighty-seven called public participation at board meetings. The board, of course, welcomes import from our community about topics germane to education. We ask each speaker to please provide their name and address for the record. And in accordance with that board policy, speakers should please keep their comments to no longer than three minutes so that others who may wish to speak can and that the full business of the board can be accomplished. I will ask Dr. Solerino to please keep time and to notify the speaker when he or she is approaching that three-minute limit that is dictated by policy. Lastly, I, I just want to close by saying that the purpose of citizen comments is for the board to collectively put and not age in one-on-one dialogue with the speaker. So, let's move to our first, our first speaker.
Good evening to Michelle Kelly. Hi, Michelle, are you on the call?
I am here, can you hear me?
We sure can, nice to hear your voice tonight.
Excellent, thank you. Um, I will keep it to three minutes. Um, my name is Michelle Kelly, we live at one oh nine South Fourth Street here in town. We have two daughters in the school district. I'm the registrar at Edgewood College in Madison. We're a private institution, almost one hundred percent reliant on the tuition of our students to operate. As such, this past summer, as schools and school districts across the country were debating what to do about fall classes, we were busy doing exactly the same thing. We decided to create a model with a great deal of flexibility, a model where students could attend classes remotely if they wanted, or in person if they wanted. And faculty could teach in person or teach remotely if they felt the need. The only expectation was that the classes would need to happen synchronously. So if the course was scheduled to meet Monday, Wednesday from ten to eleven fifty, the class would meet at that scheduled time. Maybe the instructor would be remote, maybe not. Maybe there would be ten students in the classroom, or maybe only two. Each class was assigned to a classroom and that classroom had a new COVID capacity assigned to it. Each faculty member would need to work with the students in each class to ensure that there would never be more than that number of people in the room. And if there were, there'd need to be a rotation set up. Of course, the technological challenges with this model were significant. Our IT department needed to acquire a vast amount of equipment and get it installed in short order. That is the model we implemented. It's working, and I must say, even better than we had hoped. It's still a difficult semester for both faculty and students, but it's working. And with the extensive work by our dean of students office and other administrators, we've been able to prevent significant outbreaks of coronavirus on campus. But the one thing that has made it successful is the one piece that I haven't mentioned yet, and the piece that is most critical here, the creation of what we call the student classroom assistant position. This student worker position was created for any faculty member who felt they would need assistance with the technology to teach in this world. The SCA, as we call it, is present in the room to get the main computer and projector up and running to help the faculty member manage the in-person and remote questions and/or discussions that arise and to assist with troubleshooting of all kinds. Faculty report the SCA's have played an important role in making the teaching and learning experience the best it can be under the circumstances. So I got to thinking, what if there was the equivalent role of the SCA created at the Mount Horv School District? Perhaps the title could be classroom assistant and each teacher could be assigned one of these assistants to work with them. They would be adults hired through the normal process for the school district, not student workers like we have at Edgewood. They would need to be technologically savvy and could also serve the role as a classroom monitor to ensure the safety and keep order in the classroom if the teacher is remote. With so many people having lost their jobs, I bet there would be excellent candidates for these positions, as long as they knew that they wouldn't be expected to do the actual teaching, the teachers are still doing that, and that there would be protocols in place for their safety. And they would be a valuable resource for the teachers as well, a partner to help them with the technological logistics of teaching the class, whether the teacher is teaching in person or not. I have no idea how funding works in public schools, but for how badly so many families and kids want to be back in school, is there some model that could be created? The school district already had the scheduling of two days in person, two days at home defined, so the groundwork for social distancing had been accomplished. Yes, the model would be costly and would take time to get implemented from both HR perspective and the technological and safety perspectives. This may be totally, totally unrealistic for the district, but I wanted to share just in case. Thank you for your time.
Brad, you're on mute.
Very good, I've been asked to re, and Michelle, thank you. Uh, I've been asked to repeat the telephone number, six oh eight two five zero nine one six six. Six oh eight two five zero nine one six six.
And our next speaker tonight is Brittany Schultz. Good evening, Brittany, are you on the call?
Hello, yes, I am, thank you so much. Um, I just wanted to say that I am really disappointed that week after week, um, we continue to have these conversations hounding the topic of returning for in-person school. The board voted to follow a set of metrics and our community has proved that we cannot meet those. Yet we continue going through this again and again. Schools all around us are closing, the disruption is intense for both children and teachers. We are able to provide an equitable education for our students without disruption virtually and have done so since March with a hugely robust program being put into place this fall. This is our kids' norm. At what point can we stop stating that we're living in fear by wanting to stay safe and realize that this may now be what our world looks like? Our children have adapted. I have children in both kindergarten and second grade, so my family would be affected by going back to in-person schooling. While I would choose the virtual option, the inequity of having students in different modes of instruction should not be ignored. My children have the same love and connection with their teachers virtually as they have had with in-person schooling and they've thrived from the routine and are still happy. Some days are hard and we can show our kids that some days are harder for us as well and show them how to reset, overcome, and make the next day better. I would love to see the district provide resources for families to help build these routines, maintain mental wellness, and overcome these challenges that virtual learning can bring. These concerns are not to be ignored, but we can give resources to support those, to acquire the skills they need to help make this work. Almost all those who have spoken in meetings have stated how teachers are incredible and we are grateful for them and how that is not to be disputed. But I don't understand how people can say they're grateful for teachers and not respect their professional voices. The data shared last week by Mr. Jansen was clear. The majority of teachers are subject matter experts in our schools whom we trust to take care of our children on their academic journey, do not feel it is safe to return. So we are grateful and think they're wonderful, but not willing to hear what their voices are saying. While there may have been a plan developed, their response was clear. They know these buildings best, the majority was there. They know these classrooms best, they know what restrictions were under. They understand how it will affect a student who can't tie their shoes and a teacher can't come close enough to help. They know how it will feel to have students not be able to be helped or comforted because of spacing requirements. They know what can be accomplished and their opinion was clear. I hope the board does not put us through what these smaller communities are doing who are trying to open and going through constant changes and swapping their structure back and forth between hybrid and virtual. Please give our students, families, and community a clear and equitable plan where we can be successful until it's actually safe. Our school district and community need to prevent preventable deaths. Then we can try to repair the division we've caused. Thank you.
Thank you, Brittany.
Welcome to Torn, yeah, Torn, one of our athletes, student athletes.
Dr. Solerino, it's Todd Nessheim, I think they're gonna wait until next week. Now you said that, so.
Okay, uh, they just texted me to say that they wanted to speak, so.
Okay.
Much, Coach, I appreciate that. Uh, let's continue, Anthony Lang, Anthony, are you on the call? Would you like to wait as well, or? Anthony Lang.
Yeah, I think he's gonna wait too.
Okay. Thank you, Coach, we appreciate that. Good evening to Julie, Julia Magnuson.
Hi, we, we also plan on waiting until the next meeting as well.
Okay, thank you, Julia, is that go for, uh, your friend, uh, Emma Anderson too?
Yes.
Okay, we look forward to hearing your thoughtful comments next week.
Yes, thank you.
How about Grace O'Neill?
Dr. Solerino, this is Martha Kohler Faust. I believe Grace and Ella will wait until next week also.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. How about JJ, uh, high school wrestler, JJ? You gonna wait till next week too, buddy? JJ Porch?
Well, while you're, uh, working your magic on the texting machine, I'll, I'll restate the telephone number, six oh eight two five zero nine one six six.
JJ Porch? How about Melissa Olstead, good evening, Melissa.
Good evening, Dr. Solerino, thank you so much for letting me speak. I'm actually, I'm actually speaking on behalf of the Mount Horv Education Association. We would like to start by thanking the Board of Education for their service to our schools and our community. You have been tasked with making some of the most difficult decisions our board has been faced with and for that we extend our deepest gratitude. MHEA represents over half of our professional staff. In this unprecedented time of COVID nineteen, one of our main purposes is to ensure our members' work environment is safe, healthy, and fair so that we may contribute to the excellent education of our Mount Horv students. Many of us are also citizens in this community and care deeply about our neighbors and our, and their children. We have, and live outside the district, but believe so deeply in our traditions and excellent education that they bring their own children to the Mount Horv School District. In light of tonight's meeting, MHEA encourages the board to base any changes to the reopening plan on science and data that can be followed by all and will allow for the safest return to school possible. The board has wisely continued to support any reopening plans based on the metrics from the, from the Public Health Madison Dane County. Looking at pure numbers of COVID nineteen cases in Dane County alone over the last two weeks, we had an average of one hundred and thirty-three cases a day. It is difficult to comprehend why Public Health Madison Dane County would think it's a good idea to send K-two students back at this time when their metrics read fifty-four or fewer, fifty-four or fewer cases at this level. But for some students, we know that there have been tears shed and unfortunately, tears will also be, tears are also shed at school sometime. It's heartbreaking to think that we will be faced with these tears in our classroom and we won't be able to comfort our kids and with hugs and squeezes. We would like, we would like to be back in school as much as the students. It would be easy to assume that the best thing for education right now would be just to go back to normal. Rushing to get back to school isn't going to change the fact that Wisconsin is a hotspot in our nation. It is in nobody's interest to risk lives in an effort to try and go back to normal. Right now, things are not normal. We would like the district to explore and consider expanding the virtual plus model to allow more students to receive services who are struggling in the virtual platform. Schools have always put in plans for all students who are not succeeding academically, emotionally, or nutritionally. Right now is no different than any other time. Staff would like to continue to be a part of solving this dilemma, accomplish great things. Since July, MHEA has shared many concerns in regards to the return to school. Amongst those are rising numbers, trusting staff and families to socially distance and stay at home when ill, and having key stakeholders at the table when making plans for the return. We are grateful for our ELCPC team that has been working on a plan for our return to school. This team includes administration, teacher, our school nurse, our dean of students, paraprofessionals, and our school psychologists. Including the folks who will be face-to-face with students and making this plan is crucial and we are hopeful this dialogue continues. One of MHEA's biggest concerns is bringing students back if our, bringing students back is our staff who have health issues themselves or who have household members with compromised immune systems. Rather than allowing them to take a leave, we urge the district to find a way for them to teach virtually. Our staff wants to teach, we want to be with our students. Since our last survey, it is, it is possible that more families will consider remaining virtual or will be willing to keep their children home a bit longer. We can't count on August data to drive how many virtual teachers we will need. When the next survey is out, we urge the district to consider including a question asking if families would consider remaining virtual if it is working for their kids. This will decrease the amount of long-term subs needed, lower the amount of students in the building, and possibly alleviate some of our transportation issues, just to name a few. Staff who are not face-to-face with students and have compromised immune systems or have a family member with a compromised immune system should be granted immunity from mandated work hours in our buildings and all other staff who are, who, all other staff should not, should see no increase to their hours regardless of the board's decision for K-two's return. All the rationales for having staff work from buildings are petty. Almost all buildings have had a staff member test positive and MHEA has concerns around the transparency of these, of this dialogue. Last week, Public Health Madison Dane County reported there were six school cases between two buildings that did not have students attending. This does not include the data with students in attendance, which was twelve schools, seven students, and eight staff members who tested positive. Unless a staff member does not have reliable internet connection, it is not necessary for them to work from the buildings. The CDC and Dane County Public Health are urging people to stay at home. Finally, while this is out of the board's control, we ask that the slander of the open record suit end. Teachers wrote letters with the sole desire to keep ourselves, our students, our families, and our community safe. Unfortunately, and you, we have to communicate our concerns about our work environment to the leaders who make policies about our workplace rules and procedures, which is understandably not ideal. As stated earlier, many of these staff members are community members who vote for school, in school board elections as well. It is well within our rights to express our opinion. We hope to work in a community that values teachers and respects our voice, especially when it impacts our safety. Sharing these emails that were written to the full board with the public is doing nothing but spreading hate and division in our community. Mount Horv should have no place for that, that is not the Viking way. MHEA thanks you for all your time, efforts, and entrusting us with the children of Mount Horv schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa.
Welcome to Jack Van O. Jack, one of our wrestlers. Maybe Jack wants to wait as well? Okay. Good evening, Coach Todd Nessheim.
All right, good evening. Um, yeah, the plan I think was to have each, uh, sport had kids that wanted to talk, so. Uh, I'm gonna still give my spiel here tonight if that's okay.
Please.
All right, before I get going, just again, a huge thank you to the school board and to you, Dr. Solerino, for your tireless efforts and leading our district. So, I know it's very much appreciated. Uh, I guess the reason I'm here tonight is to present an idea to the school board about a voluntary return to athletics. Before doing that, I'd like to give you a b, a brief background. School coaches and athletes in Mount Horv have not been together since early March. As you know, in the spring, we were shut down and all athletics were put on hold. In July, most schools in the state of Wisconsin allowed their coaches to return to having contact with their student athletes. Mount Horv did not, as most schools in Dane County did not. The WIA allows five contact days to be used, those are typically in the summer. This year, they have amended the rule and extended that into the fall. I'm here to seek permission to work with my team. In my twenty-seven years in education, I've learned to come to the table with some solutions, uh, instead of complaining, I guess, about a problem. So, here are a couple thoughts. Number one, my first proposal is that at a bare minimum, the board allow the winter coaches to use their five contact days at an off-district facility. In other words, on our own. This could be at a park, although it'll get a little cold out for that now at this point. A home gym, a facility such as Just-A-Game Fieldhouse like in the Dells, ICA in Stoughton, and so on. This would be completely voluntary, as I understand that some players and parents may not want to return and certainly at our own cost. It would give us a chance to meet as a team and do some things, team-oriented things, and help provide these kids with an outlet. My second proposal would be the ideal situation, that would be for the board to allow the high school teams an opportunity to use their five contact days in a district facility. I understand that even if the board gives us approval to do this, we would still need to meet the Dane County mandates, which for basketball stipulates that we focus solely on individual development and conditioning in small groups and appropriate spacing and mass. It prohibits live action, so there'd be no scrimmaging, no contact, things like that. I realize that bringing students back to a building is a big responsibility and as a father of three and a coach, nobody respects that more than me. However, as I said at the beginning, I will have solutions if the board allows. Athletics are happening all around us, we will not be recreating the wheel. I have colleagues in Wisconsin that communicate with me on a regular basis, so I know what needs to be done. In recent days, and in fact, in recent hours, some Prairie, Middleton, and other schools in Dane County had instituted a similar plan while also stating their intent on starting the winter sports seasons on time per the WIA schedule. Even though those schools are still in virtual education. There are garla, again, there are guidelines set forth by Dane County and by the WIA that we would certainly have to follow and in also coordination with our athletic director and our athletic trainer. I am of the opinion that this is what is best interest of our students and coaches. Without a doubt, you will have people questioning the idea of having athletics in the building but not live classes, and rightfully so. However, for my twenty-eight years of coaching here in Mount Horv, I've been told countless times and I truly believe that school sports are an extension of the classroom. That is how I approach coaching, I teach it. I feel that providing co-curriculars is an opportunity to have small group meetings, we will be able to demonstrate that this can be done safely and is in truly in the best interest of our kids. In the next couple weeks, it'll be dark by four-thirty, it'll be dark when I wake up anyway. Um, our kids need an outlet. And speaking with other coaches at schools in Dane County, they are also all hopeful that their school boards too will allow for similar contact days. I would prefer us to be a leader in this charge instead of reacting to other schools such as Edgewood, McFarland, I know Stoughton has a plan as well. On Friday, October sixteenth, the Badger Conference canceled our conference games for the winter. However, they did not cancel our season. Rather, they gave each school the flexibility to begin planning based on their county and school board allowances. It's time to start small with some contact days and practices and when we have successfully accomplished that, we will work on the next steps. As you can imagine, I have lots of plans and ideas for that as well. Again, not asking for a season at this point, but I am asking us, uh, for you guys to, uh, for us, the ability to prove that this is a process that we can make work and get our schools, uh, kids back in the school safely. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Coach.
From one great coach to the next, Coach Martha Kohler Faust.
Hello, everybody. Thank you, uh, my name is Martha Kohler Faust and I'm the head coach of the Mount Horv High School Gymnastics Team. I'm reaching out to you in hopes that we winter sport coaches can start meeting with our athletes. The WIAA has shortened the gymnastics season by two weeks, which makes our first practice five weeks from tonight. My hope is that the school board will allow us to have practices with our athletes, ideally in our home gym at Mount Horv High School, but I also echo Coach Todd Nessheim with the hope of meeting with our athletes in a different facility if needed. In addition to teaching and coaching for the district, I also coach at a local gymnastics club. When establishments reopened in June, I was able to coach at the club and boy, was it a great feeling to be back coaching the sport that I love. On September thirtieth, fifteen Mount Horv student athletes signed up to be a Viking gymnast. And I am proud to say that all fifteen of those young women have been training at the gymnastics club. Why is this important to tell you? Here's why. Our gymnasts and I know the importance of abiding by the Dane County ordinance regarding COVID nineteen. At the local gymnastics club, we have been wearing masks at all practices, limiting group size to ten gymnasts or less, cleaning the equipment after each practice, requiring gymnasts to have their own chalk, spray bottles, tape, et cetera, and also reinforcing social distancing. Signing in upon arrival and signing out when leaving are requirements for everyone who enters the facility and the staff takes temperatures and logs them every coaching day. And yes, it did take some time for the gymnast to get used to wearing masks while running and flipping and twisting, but they have adapted to these changes. The WIAA also labels gymnastics as a low-risk sport in regards to contact. My hope is that you will take our words to heart and that you will allow us to start our season on November sixteenth. It would be awesome if we could start, like Coach Nessheim said, having some of those contact days. Just be great to get our, our teams going for the season. I appreciate your time, thank you very much.
Thank you, Coach.
From two great coaches to a great referee, hi, Jim Myers, are you on the call tonight?
Hello, everyone. My name is Jim Myers, my address is nine two nine zero Kelzwick Road. Both my wife Jamie and I work full-time supporting the community through our careers in finance and healthcare. We have three children, grades four, two, and kindergarten. Thank you for the opportunity, allowing me the opportunity to speak tonight and thank you President Hice for calling the special meeting. For most of summer, this entire nation grappled with the challenging decision of how and when to send our children back to the classroom. Our community has been no different. Throughout all of this, we've had one thing in common. We are navigating uncharted territory and many uncertainties. Since March, the scientific knowledge regarding this virus has continued to evolve, forcing us to involve along with it. Tonight, you have the chance to demonstrate true leadership. You have the chance to show this community that you are willing to listen to the experts and follow their guidance, not the interpretations others. and follow their guidance, not the interpretations others feel should be used, but the experts. I repeat, not the interpretation others feel should be used. Tonight, you can elect a new path forward for our students rather than stick with one that has been chosen based upon disproven theories. Tonight, you can show this community that you believe our district leadership is capable of carrying out the guidance set forth by the Madison Dane County Public Health. Despite any metrics that you may hear tonight, the experts believe it is safe to return. Tonight, you can demonstrate to our local childcare centers and home learning pods that they are not in this alone. Tonight, you have the opportunity to tell the students of MHASD that you hear them and that in light of the new information and guidance, you are willing to act in their best interest and change your course of action, no matter how difficult it may be. I am hopeful that tonight you can restore hope and faith in this community by making the decision to follow the guidance that our local public health experts have set forth. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, and as you vote on the motion, please keep in mind all 2,388 students in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
And one final speaker for now. Ann Casey. Good evening, Ann.
Good evening, and thank you. I am the grandparent and guardian of a current first grader and also the parent of, some years ago, of two graduates of Mount Horvath High School. Our first grader continues to be frustrated and dysregulated at all times when he has to participate in virtual learning. Virtual learning is not working for him. He's been stalled in his academic and social-emotional learning since March, when schools first closed. We all understand how important these early education years are for a child like him, and the longer this goes on, the longer it will take to remediate and repair the damage that's been done to his education so far. We've been in contact with his teachers. We were told last week that he is far behind where he should be. He's having difficulty with the virtual learning because he missed so much even up until now. So the longer this goes on, the more difficult it is for him. He has been fortunate to have participated in a number of sports camps and other camps this past summer and continuing now for half-days in some part of the week. Those camps have provided him with the social-emotional learning and the socialization that the school has not been able to provide for him, and that's been very important to him. He wears a mask every day at those camps, even when they're outdoors. They take his temperature when he arrives. One camp took the temperature again in the afternoon. They wash hands all day long. They use their hand sanitizer. Kids are flexible. The teachers have told us and told you, the board, repeatedly that school will not look the same if they go back in person. Well, it doesn't look the same right now in virtual learning. It's not even close. The kids understand that. Kids are flexible. It's time for the adults to be flexible and creative and do a better job and think hard about how these kids can be served. I'm very happy that the board is considering following the recommendation of the experts at public health who are recommending that certain cohorts come back to school. I don't think there's any more you need to know. Those are the scientists. Those are the experts, and you should be listening to them. The gradual reopening plan that you're currently working under goes back to the middle of the summer. We've learned a lot about COVID since then, and many organizations are adapting their plans as we've learned more and the experts tell us new things. I think it's time for the Mount Horvath School District to do that, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
Dr. Slirino, are we... There are no speakers, is there? No.
Are there any other participants in citizen comments tonight? One last call for additional citizen comments.
Yeah, I have one. Hi, I'm JJ Porch. I'm a high school wrestler here, and I think that we shall have a winter in-school and winter sports for a number of good reasons, because I believe as a student of the high school, when I was in a sport, I tend to focus a lot better because the academic and the focus of me wanting to participate in that sport really helped me increase my grades, because I know if I failed a class that I can get the help that I need because of the sport that I'm in. And I feel bad for all the seniors in any winter sport, because this is their last chance to prove to scouts and colleges that they are worth getting a scholarship for, because there are lots of students who financially can't pay for college, and they saved up, and yet they still don't have enough, but they have the skill to get scholarships. But with this and us not having any sports, you cannot get a scholarship, because I have a friend who's in Kansas who they already stopped winter sports. They're not doing it, and this was his year to win a state wrestling title on his name, because last season, the guy he lost against to make him get second place graduated, so this was his year, and he was guaranteed a shot at winning, but he can no longer do that because of winter sports being canceled. I feel that winter sports shall continue and give more opportunity to students who just want to make a name for themselves academically and as a full sport, putting their mind into everything they got to just give their all and show that they're worth scouts looking at them. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. We've got one last speaker.
Thank you, JJ. I know that's not easy to speak in front of a large group of people, and you did so eloquently. Thank you. And I know your coach, your wrestling coach, would be proud of you. He's up next. Josh, how are you doing tonight?
Okay, I think we're gonna move on, and if we need to catch up at the end, that's what we'll do. Moving on to item 4A, personnel transactions. Obviously, you've had the opportunity to look at what's in board doctors or anything additional, anything unusual.
This is Diana. Motion to approve. Second, Kimberly.
Diana has moved, and Jeff has seconded a motion to approve personnel transactions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in the theater will say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed will say no. The ayes have the motion carries, and personnel transactions are approved. Item 5A, November 30th Board Workshop needs. There are two questions that I have for my colleagues on the possibility of a November 3rd Board Workshop. Number one, do we want one? And number two, if we do, what would be some possible topics for discussion? I don't think that's as important as nearly done, whether or not it's the board's desire to have a workshop at the end of November.
I would say yes, we should have one. I don't think now is the time for us to...
So I agree.
Not taking advantage of opportunities to be working on stuff.
I agree.
Okay, I think by consensus, we've agreed that we will hold the workshop on November 30th. Does a topic for discussion come to anyone's mind, or should we save that as we get closer to the date?
Right. This is Kimberly. I have one idea. It's different than our important work that we've been focusing on lately, but the DPI will be releasing a new school-level finance report on November 19th, and that's going to detail what each school district spends on a per-pupil level, and I imagine that will generate quite a bit of community interest as we look at our neighboring community school districts, so that's one possibility for our workshop.
Yep. That's a good one. Other ideas? Okay, well, hearing none, I mean, as we go, Dr. Slirino.
It's what Marty was just mentioning. We would love to know what you would like, because we imagine if we're gonna need to bring in guest speakers, it would be the Monday after Thanksgiving. It might take us some time in order to put something together. Would it be okay if we brought this subject back to the board next week and give people some time to learn other ideas that they might have? Board workshop just for the education of those who are listening and have professional development opportunities for board members to learn more about boardmanship and other topics that are journeying through your work.
Okay. Is there anything else on item 5A? Item 5B, COVID-19 update, Dr. Slirino.
Yes, and good evening again, everyone. It's a pleasure to see everyone. I know everybody's here for the same reason. It's because they care deeply about children. At the conclusion of our last Board of Education meeting, the board unanimously called upon the administration to begin developing a plan that could bring K-2 students back into the schoolhouse. And as Mrs. Olmsted so thoughtfully shared with the community tonight, we have begun work in earnest around what could a schedule look like. We know that no one schedule is going to be amenable to everybody, but as we put the finishing touches on that schedule, kindergarten through second-grade parents can expect to see an email coming from my office likely on Friday afternoon in which that schedule is shared, as well as then a survey to families asking would they prefer, based upon the schedule that's been provided, to return to a hybrid model or continue along the pathway for virtual learning. We want to honor the request of all families, and so for us to build our schedule, we want to hear from you and what your needs are, and then we will build it around the needs of our students. And that does include honoring the request of all families who wish to go with an all-virtual pathway. We will continue to be rigorous with our instruction. We'll continue to provide some really great experiences for your children. There is not a better faculty and staff equipped, in my opinion, to do the kinds of things that we have ahead of us, and how grateful and blessed we are as a community for them. We recognize that this will result in a number of questions on the parts of our kindergarten through second-grade families, and as a result, our senior leadership team with the help of Principal Rachel Johnson is going to host a town hall for families next Tuesday, October the 27th at 5:00 p.m., just to ask and honor any questions that you may have before we ask parents to complete that survey by Wednesday, October the 28th. So just a quick recap. Friday, October 23rd, we'll be sending out the details to families via email, and we're asking parents to put their nickel down in terms of what their needs are for return to school in a hybrid model or in a virtual format. We'll also ask at that time for families to tell us what their transportation needs are, as well as what their food service needs might be as well. We know that trying to balance the needs of our amazing staff and their needs to take care of themselves and that of their families is a decision that's running along a parallel to our planning efforts. We've asked our faculty and staff to notify us no later than November the 4th, in fact, sooner if possible, if they wish to explore opportunities or any kind of lead they think they might be eligible for, because we do need to pair up then qualified, highly-qualified substitutes in order to take their place in the interim. Obviously, we can never fill the shoes fully of the amazing staff members that we have here, but we also know that we can hopefully, with your help, families, be able to identify highly-qualified candidates to help us move the ball. Ultimately, it would be my goal, tentatively, to return our children back to school on November the 16th, assuming, of course, any change to the gradual reopening plan allows that to happen in its current incarnation, or if the board does elect to make any kind of change to that gradual reopening plan this evening. November the 16th is that timeframe. In my visits, I've visited with the faculty and staff now a number of times over the course of the past couple of months. One of the requests that they've made, and I think is a very reasonable request, is an opportunity to have some additional planning time in order to make that happen. And so sometime during the week of November the 9th, I would advise that we should be prepared that there'll be at least two days in which we won't have instruction available for our K through 2 students so that our faculty and staff can properly prepare for new schedules. As you might imagine, based upon the needs of our staff, I need to be fully transparent with you, we may need to reschedule students to different classrooms, and based upon the needs of our families, we will likely need to rebalance the schedules of our children. I'm sure those of you who can just begun thinking about what it takes to schedule already understand this, but it is important that I am as transparent with you about that as possible. The other piece that would be important for those who are not in K-2, or for that matter, even our K-2 families, we are preparing a second opportunity for our students and their families to pick up materials for the second quarter that will happen on Wednesday, November 4th, and Thursday, November 5th from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Wednesday, we'll be supporting families with children of the last name A through K and L through Z on Thursday. Now, of course, if it's a hardship for any family, we can be flexible, and you're welcome to come on alternating days. We just simply, you know, we scheduled this so as to reduce any kind of congestion. A pickup is gonna be very much the same as it was in June and in August. Please have a sign in your car window with your child's name and grade. Of course, maintaining physical distancing, staying in your vehicle. And if you or anyone with whom you've contacted has been ill within 14 days, please don't come. We would be more than happy to make alternative arrangements when you're feeling better. And if you have more than one child, as you might imagine, we're going to ask you to pick up those materials at each of those buildings. I would be remiss if I did not take a moment just to share some reflections I've had with regard to conversations with other superintendents, my discussions with Public Health Madison Dane County around the concept of athletics in the winter season. And while President Heiss thought we indicated this will be a topic for discussion at our next board meeting, perhaps maybe an opportunity just to share what I know to be facts at this time. Big Eight schools as of today announced that their conference competition for winter sports will not occur, and quite frankly, this follows and mirrors the feedback that we've received from the Badger Conference around athletics. We have been repeatedly asking for us to consider, for us to consider, what does Public Health Madison Dane County have to say on this topic? We believe that we should look to the science and epidemiologists, and in fact, if you don't mind, I'm gonna share my screen with you right now so that you can see what I've been reading about and what I've been learning about as it relates to this topic, so please There is a nice one-page, two-page handout... There is a nice one-page, two-page handout from Public Health Madison that talks about school guidance, and hopefully those of you at home can, can see this and read along with me. As Coach Nessheim so thoughtfully stated tonight, there are some requirements. How big can that group be? And that group, if it's outdoors, is limited to no more than 25 people in a specific area. And of course, maintaining physical distancing, public health has permitted this to occur. And if indoors, no more than 10 people in a specified area. It doesn't say in the building, it says in a specific area. Again, maintaining physical distancing. I imagine if we were to be creative and using the concept of maybe taking our gym and turning it sideways, we'd be getting two basketball courts within the same area. We could be physically distancing ourselves as well. And then want to take note of a couple of differentiations the scientists and epidemiologists who are working with Public Health Madison Dane County have made. The first of which is high-risk sports. And this might be, as you might imagine, those people who come in contact with one another a little bit more often. Wrestling would be an impact on us right now. Our football, although that, as you know, is jockeyed until potentially later winter. But medium-risk sports are those sports that have to do with also some kind of team, whether it be a group gymnastics or swimming relays, or maybe some kind of artistic swimming. It does not preclude, at this time, low-risk sports. And tonight, we heard from Coach Martha Kohler Faust about opportunities for our individual youngsters to be in the gymnastics and individual competition. I still think there is opportunities for our young people to participate safely in winter sports that does not include competition, but provides them the opportunity to do the skill building and the socialization we know we all long for. And those of you who might take umbrage with my, with my feedback tonight, I just remind you that my stance has always been, as long as we're following the feedback from the scientists and epidemiologists, they know better than I do. And that's why I make such a, make such a recommendation for the board's consideration as we go into next week. Those who might take umbrage also with my comments to say, well, why would you allow for sports and not allow for children to come back into the high school for classes? Again, I look to what the scientists of Public Health Madison Dane County tell us. And at this point, they're indicating that they don't recommend coming into the classroom just because of its size and other ancillary factors, but rather that you believe it is appropriate for low-risk sports to, to participate. And then there's some constructive ways in which we can get some of our medium-risk sports there. So thank you for, for hearing me out. Thank you for understanding. This is something that all of us are trying to wrap our heads around. I don't know that my answer's the right answer. It just feels like to me it's the right answer. But I respect, of course, all those who, who might feel differently. I imagine that if the board were to look at some kind of return to sports, the question might then come, well, what about some of our rec departments? And what about some of our clubs? And what about so on and so forth? Walking groups, early in the morning, our high school has been used for walking. I would suggest, let's hit the pause button on those. Let's not introduce any new contaminants. Let's be evolutionary, not revolutionary in our, in our, in our practice. So I'll stop sharing this screen. I'm pleased with the progress that's being made so far. It's a, really a partnership on behalf of many, many individuals. And I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have at this time.
Any questions or comments for Steve? All right. If there are no, no questions or comments for Steve, I'm wondering, do we want to have a discussion under this agenda item and then move to action items based on what we, what we discuss, or we want to move to action items and discuss things after motions are introduced? I guess I'd like to, I'd like to have a discussion, I'd like to have a discussion first, and then we can move to, then we can move to action items if there's anything to act on. Does that make sense? Okay? Well, I'll, I'll go ahead and start. I offered, or will offer several amendments to the gradual reopening plan. Essentially, and my amendments are in board docs, if you haven't, if you haven't seen them. Essentially, what they, they do is they identify the current metrics as path one and continue to require that those metrics be met before proceeding to step three of the plan. Or so, an option, a second path, that the district could advance, that the district may advance to step three of the plan on the recommendation of Public Health Madison Dane County. That is, that if Public Health Madison Dane County recommends the grade level cluster, ID grades K-2, 3, 5, or 6, 12, those are just listed as examples of what a grade level cluster is, or a series of clusters, may return to school for in-person instruction. And then there's a note at the bottom that simply reinforces the availability of all virtual instruction. So that's what I offer to my, to my colleagues on the board first for, first for discussion.
Hi Rod, this is Jessica. We need objective measures to reopen our schools that take the motion and the personal opinions out of our decisions. That's why we asked Dr. Salerno to develop a gradual reopening plan in July, and we approved it on August 17th. When we approved our plan, it included both Public Health Madison Dane County orders and guidance and Forward Dane metrics. We did not know at that time what Public Health Madison Dane County orders and guidance would include, or what criteria they would use to make their decisions. On August 21st, Public Health Madison Dane County issued Order Number 9, which states, "Public Health Madison Dane County is allowing in-person student instruction for grades kindergarten through second." They also provided a school reopening matrix. For K-2, it includes two points, a target of 54 cases per day or less, and additional considerations, which are Forward Dane metrics, case trajectory, current best practices, federal and state guidance, and other unforeseen influencing factors. What this means is, experts at Public Health Madison Dane County are looking at Forward Dane metrics in order to make their recommendation. And then we are also looking at Forward Dane metrics and coming up with a decision. Forward Dane metrics are being considered twice, once by experts and once by school board members. Based on our county's current status, I cannot say that I agree with Public Health Madison Dane County's recommendations, but as I said previously, we need guidance from experts and objective measures to assess opening schools. And according to Dr. Salerno, for legal liability reasons, it is best to follow Public Health Madison Dane County and to not develop metrics of our own. Considering that Public Health Madison Dane County has stated that they review Forward Dane metrics, I believe that those metrics shouldn't be clea, be included as additional measures in our plan the way it currently states.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments?
Rod, this is Kimberly.
Hi Kimberly.
Hi. You know, I'm just not in favor of following the path that so many Wisconsin districts are struggling with right now, where they're two weeks in and two weeks out, either from positive tests or simply because they've drained all the staff resources and they don't have enough manpower to keep these buildings open. I don't see how it could do any better than they've done. I am worried about disrupting student learning. All boards of education are tasked with overseeing a curriculum. That is one of our fundamental jobs, one that must be delivered with consistency and one without gaps in instruction, so that all students are receiving the same content. Though it is so frustrating, staying virtual for the bulk of our Vikings seems to be the best course of action right now to fulfill that board member responsibility. However, as we continue to hear about individual families in which virtual instruction is not working, due to the skill or the limitations of their students who are struggling too much to be successful, I would encourage our principals to engage in more invitations to virtual plus instruction.
Thank you, Kimberly. Additional comments? Other additional comments? Hearing none, we will move to item 6A. Action items, consideration of action on the district's gradual reopening plan, which may include modification, deletion of part, or all of the plan's current metrics, or both inclusion of new metrics or other action that could alter the plan, including action to change the instructional delivery model for the second quarter of 2020. I would return you to the amendments that I've proposed to the gradual reopening plan and move their adoption. I have moved and Danny has seconded a motion to approve the amendments that I have identified and documented October 18, 2020. Is there any discussion?
Rod, I'm confused on your amendments. Is your amendment path one or path two? I'm confused.
My amendment is to insert that language. So my amendments are anything that, the insertion of anything that you see in, any language that you see in red.
So what would, I guess I'm feeling a little slow tonight? I don't, I guess I don't understand what path two, isn't the path two just basically take over path? I don't, I don't understand how there would be an or. Like, is that just, we will then revote on when we hit metrics? Is that the rationale?
No, I, no, I don't think we have to revote. I think if the, if Public Health Madison Dane County were to issue a recommendation for a particular grade level cluster or clusters that those students may return for in-person instruction, we wouldn't need to, we wouldn't need to be, to revote. It could be done administratively because it would be part of the, of the plan. That's the purpose of the, of the amendment.
I, I think it's, it's one or the other, in my opinion. I think, I mean, it's our decision that we're supposed to make. I, I don't, I'm not, I'm not getting it.
So let me take a half a step back because, so, so we can, we can do one of two things. One, one of two standards need to be met. If these amendments are adopted, one of two things needs to happen in order for us to, to return to in-person instruction. Either path one, all of the metrics that are currently in the plan need to be fulfilled, or Public Health Madison Dane County makes a recommendation that says, students in grades K through 2 may return to the classroom for in-person instruction. That, 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 that's the heart of the amendment. And by, whichever happens, whichever happens first, thank you. So whichever happens first, we either go down path one and those metrics are met, or the public health department recommends that a particular grade level cluster may return to school for, for in-person instruction, and that's really, again, the heart of the amendment. And, and again, there's nothing that we as a board would need to do once we, once we pass this amendment. It, it could be done administratively again, because now it's part of, now, now it's part of the plan.
But whichever happens first, path two is always going to happen first because path two is part of path one.
Uh, no, path two is not always going to be part of path one. It certainly is not part of path one right now.
It says that one of our metrics is that Public Health Madison Dane County orders and guidance allow for limited in-person attendance. I don't understand how that's different than what your recommendation is.
Well, the difference is all of the other metrics that are in path one.
Right, but you're going to hit, if Dane County Public Health recommends K-2 to go back, then you are never going to hit those other metrics. You're always going to jump down to path two. Am I, is anybody else understanding this differently, or am I just completely out of left field here?
So one, one of two things could happen at any one point in time. And that is assuming that we haven't hit the metrics in path one. We either hit the ma, the metrics in path one first, all of them, or the Dane County Public Health issues a recommendation that a particular grade level cluster, in this case, in the immediate case, kindergartners through second graders can return for in-person instruction.
Rod, perhaps you could try, this is Kimberly, changing your motion to leave out the path language and just be direct in what your action is seeking?
I'm not sure I want to do that. I think these are two distinct, these are two distinct path paths for, by which our kids could, could return to the classroom. I mean, you have a, you have a suggestion, Kimberly? I don't, I'm not sure that we want to, I mean, we don't.
I was just trying to help board members with the clarity that they were seeking.
I'm not sure that not calling them paths would make it clearer. We identified a set of, of, of metrics in the original plan. That's path one. We now are identifying, or could, I hope we identify a second path. And that is if, in this case, they have, that is, the Public Health Madison Dane County issues a recommendation that a grade level cluster returned, returned to the classroom for in-person instruction, which they have done. That is a second, separate path from path one.
Rod, I guess what I was trying to say earlier was that the third bullet, the Forward Dane metrics, are already in that second bullet. They're already part of the Public Health Madison Dane County orders and guidance. So we're assessing them twice, so they don't really need to be called out separately.
I'm, I'm having, we're, we're, hey guys, so here, here's the, here's the, here's the, where the spider gets bit. We can, we can talk about the, the language, which is, which is, is fair enough. We can, we can talk about the, the language, which is, which is, it's fair enough. The question is, do we want kids in grades K through two to be able to return to the classroom for in-person instruction? And if we do, then right now as we sit here, the only thing that we have to lean on is the, is Public Health Madison Dane County's recommendation that they do that. The piece of paper that I put together changes our plan to do that.
Rod, I see it slightly differently. I think that because our plan was agreed on and developed in July prior to Public Health Madison Dane County, um, Orders and Guidance being developed and shared with us, we are revisiting our plan, not necessarily just for K-2, but for all of our grade levels. What metrics are we going to follow?
What, what we're saying is that we're going to follow Public Health Madison's recommendations. That's what the amendment is saying.
So, this is what, and Danny raises a, uh, an interesting point. I mean, we, we, we've heard a lot about how, about how we should listen to the scientists and the epidemiologists, and, and I think it's a fair argument. But we can't then come to a point where, where they have said that something is reasonable and then all of a sudden ignore it. We can't, we can't do that. We can't say, well, Madison Dane County had it right, had it right, had it right. Oh, gosh! We actually are going to be able to do something, get kids back into the classroom based on their, their recommendation, and all of a sudden they're wrong. That's, that's, that's not the way it works. That's not the way it works. I mean, if I understand you correctly, Jessica, I, I guess I look at it the opposite way. They've, they've learned new things since July, if I'm understanding you correctly, that inform this recommendation. Otherwise, they wouldn't have made it. So, I, uh, I, listen, I, you know, if there's a reasonable, uh, if there's a reasonable amendment to be made to my amendment and motion, I'm happy to hear it. But nothing that changes the substance of it, because the substance of it is meant to bring kids who are in kindergarten through second grade back to the classroom or continue in all virtual if that's what they, they would like. But that's what this is meant to do. Because right now, if we just rely on the metrics of Path One, we can't, we cannot take advantage of the recommendation that Public Health Madison Dane County has made. And so, again, I, 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 we get back to a, a spot where we've been talking about scientists and epidemiologists, and then all of a sudden, it makes no sense to heed their, their word, which they've given to us very directly. We recommend that they be returned to the classroom.
Rod, we're, I think, arguing over the same thing. Um, in their order number, okay, so.
Okay.
Bullet Number Two says, Public Health Madison Dane County Orders and Guidance allow for limited in-person attendance. Order Number Nine says that K-2 students can go back to class.
Okay, I don't, I, yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right.
And they made that decision based on looking at Forward Dane Metrics. So, what I'm saying is that they looked at those metrics and made a decision. And we should follow their decision. We shouldn't have, we shouldn't, they shouldn't look at those mes- mes- metrics and make a decision, and then we also look at those metrics and make a decision.
Yeah, I got.
Because we aren't the experts. Do you understand? I, I, I think we're just.
Jessica, thank you. The, the old man gets it now. Uh, that, that is awesome. I, I get it. I get it, thank you. Thank you for taking that, uh, it took three times, but I got it, thank you. Steve, can we go to the next screen? I can't see people. No, that's not your phone. All right. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will move to the vote. We will vote by roll call. Danny?
Yes.
Diana?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Kimberly?
No.
Leah?
No.
And I'm a yes. There are, the yeses are five, the nos are two, the motion passes, and the amendments are agreed to. Dr. Slernow, you now have administrative authority to bring our K through two students back as quickly as possible. Is there any other under, uh, excuse me, is there any other business under 6A action items? Hearing none, we'll move to 7A Citizen Comments. Those who wish to speak should please text their first and last name and address to 608-250-9166.
And Coach Reins is on the call here tonight. Uh, Coach, if you want to give me a call on my cellphone here, I can put your, uh, comment on speakerphone here. Hey, how are you, Coach? Uh, is it okay if I have your speakerphone?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, please.
You see, during the meetings, uh, thank you all for your hard work, your dedication. It's been a very good time, so we appreciate your time. Uh, my name is Josh Shindy. I have a son, Coach, here at the high school. Uh, you know, a lot of my, uh, thing that I wanted to mention that I already stated previously by Coach Nethin and Coach Mark the Father. Uh, I got a few points that I would like to, uh, to add to that, and I'm sure the gymnastics, the basketball organizations have been doing similar things, but, uh, us through USA Wrestling, uh, as well as other national state organizations, we have been sent, uh, numerous, uh, different guidelines, policies, procedures. Uh, we're very organized, and I feel very confident with the assistance, uh, supervision of the school district administrators, athletic directors, and so on, that we could certainly, uh, resume, uh, safely and follow the guidelines. Uh, without, uh, high school athletics, our, our student athletes will, and a lot of them already have, uh, they will seek out their own opportunities, which means that they will be traveling, uh, outside of the county and not under, uh, strict guidelines. But I believe our kids would be much safer, uh, you know, if we could do it, uh, under your and our supervision. Uh, we have, my coach, Keith F, and I have been in contact via basically text message throughout the, uh, since March with our athletes, checking in on a weekly basis with them. And, uh, our kids want to come back. They will do anything that they have to to come back. They are struggling mentally, socially. Uh, he said needs, not just sports. Sports is obviously important to me as a coach, but more importantly, it is about the relationships that they develop with their friends and, uh, the social interaction. And, and these kids are struggling. They need, uh, they need this back, and they're willing to follow any guidelines, uh, that we put forth. Uh, I feel very strongly that we can do that. Uh, us as coaches, we, uh, really need to show our kids that we are leaders and that we can, uh, you know, we can make this happen. And I, I feel that this is an important one for us as coaches, as leaders, to show our kids that, that we can follow and be responsible and make things, uh, as safe as possible. And lastly, I'll just reiterate, uh, something I was mentioning previously about the coaches, but, uh, this would be completely off careful. We aren't making anything mandatory. Uh, you know, I think those that choose to not participate, we fully respect their decision, uh, but the majority that has, that would like to renew, uh, we would love to provide that, that very sort of opportunity to get them back with their teammates, classmates, and, uh, and certainly with all of the guidelines. And, uh, so, we keep that in consideration, and thank you all for allowing me to have an opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Coach, for all you do for our kids. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any additional speakers for Citizen Comments?
No, no so far.
Okay. Last call for Citizen Comments, one at once.
I would like to speak if I have a chance to speak.
Go ahead, Becky.
Um, I'm just going to go on record, I understand the difficulty of these decisions, but as a staff member, um, I'm very saddened. I feel like, um, I've had conversations with some K-2 staff who have said to me they have felt the least respected in their career by the treatment that they've been given by our school district. I am concerned that it's now your responsibility as a school board and an administration to make sure that that staff feels safe and supported. I'm going to go on record that two days is not enough time to prepare for the shift to a brand-new and different platform. It took us three weeks to put together a virtual platform, and those people are going to be asked to shift their classes, the students that they work with, the format that they use in two days. So, I ask you to reconsider that plan. And I guess I just feel like you're going to have to work hard to make sure that the people who don't feel like this is a safe place for them to be working can be accommodated. I have spent, this is my 20th year as a teacher in the district, and I have always felt like I was respected and supported, and I feel like it's a very sad time.
Thank you, Becky.
Thank you, Becky. We're sorry you feel that way. We want to also extend, uh, JJ Porch, do you like to speak again?
Yes, sir. Um, as a high school student who has to go through waking up and going to an online class, I feel that it is not working for the sole purpose of, I've heard dozens of people tell me that their internet cuts out, so they can't learn the material, and that some of the early morning touchpoints that you guys enlisted, teachers aren't showing up to them, so you can't get the lesson that you've learned. I've been to multiple touchpoints where my teacher has not been there, so I can't learn the material that I missed because of internet issues. And I've talked to many of these students, and they are all welcome to wear a biohazard suit to school and just so we can learn the material, because many of our students for Malhurab School District are hands-on learners, and we cannot do that over a computer screen. If we have to go into school and take two weeks off because someone has been diagnosed with COVID, I would much rather have that, knowing that I had one day inside of school to learn more than I've had online in general. Thank you.
Thank you, Jippy. Other, Steve?
I can't see anybody else.
Last call for Citizen Comments. Seeing none, we'll move to Item Eight, uh, Item Eight, Adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Jeff has moved, and Danny has seconded, uh, motion to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all's in favor, we'll say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed will say no. The ayes have the motion carries, and we adjourn. Thank you, and good night.